Can I get the council members to take their seats? Meaning you, Tim Gould. Alright. Thanks, everybody for being here. We'll call this meeting to order. It is seven o'clock on Monday, May 18th. Thank you, everybody, for being here. And I want to say a thank you to our staff who have put this setup together, making sure that we're all socially distanced and masked and temperature-checked, making sure that everybody's safe in the meeting. We have with us tonight Pastor Shell Osmond with Life Church Assembly of God at 4100 King Springs Road, who lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Everybody, please rise.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Ms. Jones, what an honor it is to be here with you tonight. I'll invite us to join together in a moment of prayer if you would like to bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, you've taught us in your word that we're to pray for all people, and especially for those who rule in authority over us, for kings and those who you have placed. We thank you that your word clearly teaches us that all authority has been established by you. And so, Father, tonight, I just lift up, and we lift up, our mayor, our council members, Ms. Jones, all of those who serve in this great city. And we ask that you would guide them and direct them in each and every decision that they make. Watch over all of our public safety personnel, Chief Akry and his staff, Chief Bennett and his staff. And Lord, let Smyrna continue to be a great place to live and work and play and worship and dine and enjoy the wonderful things with which you have blessed us. And tonight, it's my honor to lift this prayer and to offer it in the name of my Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, for being with us this evening. Item two, agenda changes. We have none. Item three is the mayoral report, and I have a few things I want to go over, and then we'll get into the rest of the agenda. As y'all know, we've been meeting virtually for several weeks now. This is our first in-person meeting in a while. We've taken all the precautions, including having it here in the large gym, temperature checks, face coverings, and space seating for social distancing. And just, everybody that's here in attendance, please make sure that you maintain at least six feet of social distancing and keep your face coverings on at all times. We've been careful and cautious about any decisions made throughout this health crisis. Been reacting to data daily and doing everything we can to make sure we don't put citizens or staff at any unnecessary health risk. And thanks again, staff, for all your hard work putting together this setup. And we'll use this not only for city council meetings, but for planning and zoning meetings and License and Variance Board and other things that require public hearings. So as an update, many facilities in the city remain closed, but today, staff began returning to work in staggered shifts. And I'll say, all of the essential services have been provided by our staff to citizens throughout this entire health crisis. And they've been fantastic in adapting to this environment that changes pretty much every day. They came back to work with health precautions, including single points of entry, temperature checks, face coverings, social distancing, and additional cleaning and sanitizing of workspaces. Our parks here in Smyrna have remained open throughout this, with the exception of playgrounds and gathering places at parks. On Friday, we opened all of our sports fields so that, you know, a parent and child can go pitch and hit, for example. We're not opening it up for team sports, games, or practices right now. We'll keep watching the data and see what the governor does as far as his orders. Right now, he is ordering no gatherings of 10 or more people, and so, games would be more than that. Bathroom facilities at all of the sports fields and at Taylor Bronner Park opened today with multiple cleanings and sanitizing every day. The tennis courts at Tolleson and Rose Garden will open on Wednesday, as well as those bathroom facilities, and court reservations can be made through the Parks and Rec Department. Both Lake Court and Burger Park Dog Parks will open on Wednesday. The Smyrna Library began taking reservations for curbside pickup today, and citizens can put items on hold with their library card and pick up their materials when they're ready. You can look at our website, www.smyrnaga.gov, under the Departments tab and then the Library tab for more information. And the Smyrna Recycling Center opens for limited service beginning Friday, May 29th. We've gotten a lot of questions about that. That's one of those services that's, you know, high direct contact, and we're being extra careful. It'll be open Fridays and Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and drop-offs will be done by reservation only. And Janet Lieberman, a head of our Environmental Services, will be given more information over the next week or so as we get up to May 29th. And then, like I said earlier, in-person meetings of Planning and Zoning Board, the License and Variance Board and the City Council will continue to remain held here in the large gym to enable appropriate spacing and safety precautions. This will enable us to do public hearings and start moving on some zoning things. I will tell you, we are not going to do any zonings until the Declaration of Emergency or Shelter-in-Place expires, which is right now, June 12th, because I don't want to have a zoning hearing where people medically fragile or those that the governor has ordered to shelter in place. I want everybody to be able to participate in the process, and so, we'll delay anything until after that expires. Right now, Tolleson Pool remains closed, although we're working on getting that cleaned up and ready to reopen. No date has been set yet. The Wolf Center will continue to remain closed, at least through mid-June, which is in line with the governor's shelter-in-place order. And I'd just like to thank everybody for your cooperation as we get through this. We've tried to take a thoughtful and incremental approach, following the governor's orders and reacting to data daily, with no gatherings of 10 or more. We encourage you to wear face coverings, especially in enclosed spaces, like grocery stores. Wash your hands often and exercise strict social distancing of at least six feet. And I'll tell you, I'm proud of what we've been doing here in Smyrna. As I go around town, I see people in the parks. I saw people gathered on the green, watching the Blue Angels fly over. I saw people downtown on Cinco de Mayo. And pretty much in every instance that I've seen, people are adhering to the social distancing and really making that effort. And that's what it's going to take to put this in our rearview mirror. So just please continue to exercise caution in your interactions with others, and we'll all get through this together. I'd like to take an opportunity to wish the graduates of Campbell High School congratulations and best of luck in the future. Some pretty crazy times associated with the graduation, but we hope that you go off and do great things and learn a lot, and then bring all those skills and knowledge and experiences and share them back here in Smyrna with us. Wanted to update y'all on the Support Smyrna program that we've talked about at several meetings. We're now almost up to $150,000 raised, which is incredible, and we've been able to help a lot of citizens eat. And there's a lot of people that need this help right now. So that's been a tremendous program, and thank you to everybody who's participated. The Hot Meals Program continues at three locations, three days a week. Chuck Camp Park, John Col Park, and at the Tillman House on Concord Road. Still doing almost 1,400 meals a week, which has been tremendous for the community. And then, I just want to take a quick second and thank Bennett Taylor, who's a third grader who reached out to me to interview me, who lives in King Valley. And he publishes a newspaper there for the neighborhood, and I appreciate him reaching out and spending some time with me. And with that, we'll go back to the agenda. Item four is land issues, zonings, and annexations. We have none. Item five is privileged licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business. 6A 2020-167 is the public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget. Ms. Sadler Jones, background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. As the mayor mentioned, this is our public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget. It will be presented by the Finance Director, Kristin Robinson, and the Budget Officer, Jarrett Segman. The total budget as proposed is $105,954,598. Jarrett and Kristin will go through each of the fund categories with you. And the budget is scheduled for adoption by our City Council on Monday, June 1st. So I'll turn it over to Kristin and Jarrett.
Good evening, everyone. Jarrett's going to get started and go through the first part of the presentation. I just wanted to quickly let you know that everybody has a copy of the slideshow in front of you. And I also included on your desk revised summary pages. Once we get through tonight and answer any remaining questions, we'll provide updated budget books later in the process. We just wanted to save some trees and not reprint all of this until later in the process. So Jarrett's going to get started, so if y'all have any questions, just let us know. Thank you.
Alright, good evening. As you can see, the budget presentation is on the screen. These are fairly good-sized monitors up here, but if you are a member of the public and you have a particular interest in the budget tonight, if that's why you're here, I would invite you to come on up to the front row where there are a few seats available up here. I can imagine it will be pretty hard to see the presentation from the back. So you're welcome to do that if you like. We are going to tag-team the presentation tonight. Kristin and I, I will get us started. And this is really the next phase of the process. It's something that began back in November with our capital budgeting process. It continued in February with our operating budget process. And tonight, we're at the point where we are ready to present a proposed budget and collect any public input that you might have an interest in providing tonight. This is an overview of our planned presentation tonight. We'll talk about the budget in high-level terms. We will address the COVID-19 estimated financial impacts. We will give an overview of several of our major funds. We'll talk about proposed fee changes, debt obligations, capital projects, and we will conclude with some personnel recommendations. As Ms. Jones mentioned, the total proposed budget is $105,954,598. The slide that's up now shows you the proposed budget compared to the revised budget for the current fiscal year, FY 2020. That table also shows you the increase or the decrease and the percent change as well. And you can see that the table is really categorized there by fund or by group of fund. So for instance, looking at the top line, you can see our general fund is projected to increase $464,000. That is less than 1% over the prior fiscal year. Our special revenue funds are expected to decrease $515,000. Our capital project fund is expected to increase $9.9 million. That is a pretty significant increase, and I can tell you that is due to the 2016 SPOST. As you know, construction is already underway for that significant capital project, and we have budgeted for a full year of construction activity along that corridor. This budget does include an expected $10 million contribution from Cobb County toward that project. Internal Services Funds, there's just one. It's our Vehicle Replacement Fund. You can see it is budgeted at a $100,000 increase over the prior year. And Enterprise Funds are expected to be down $4.8 million. And I can tell you, the decrease there is related to our Water Sewer CIP. The previous council, actually, at the beginning of this fiscal year, ended up amending our FY 2020 budget. We realized that the scope of some needed waterline modifications along Windy Hill Road was greater than we had anticipated, and that was a $4.3 million project, a lot of which we pulled from Water Sewer CIP reserves. And that's the reason for the increased budget in FY 2020 and the decrease that you see now compared to FY 21. I'll also note on this slide, again, it's hard to see, but at the bottom right, you'll see a reference to the budget book and a page number. So for many of the slides in our presentation tonight, if you have an interest in seeing more of that information, you can check out the budget book on that page number. The previous slide showed you the proposed budget compared to the FY 2020 revised budget. And for some additional context, this slide shows you revenues versus expenditures. So again, it's organized the same way by fund or group of funds, and then you see the transfer either to or from cash reserves. Now, a note about this slide is that the general fund is required to be shown as balanced, and it is shown as balanced here. But we have used $500,000 from general fund reserves in order to balance the general fund. So while that's not shown on this slide, just recognize that that is basically a revenue line item that's adding up to what you see there. Similarly, for special revenue funds, one of those special revenue funds is the Hotel Motel Fund, and we are budgeting to use $150,000 from Hotel Motel Fund Reserves. For capital project funds, you can see that we expect expenditures to exceed revenues by $3 million. That is related to the 2016 SPOST. We are expecting to spend more than we bring in next year, but for now, we have saved up sufficient fund balance to be able to do that. And again, the Internal Service Funds, that's our Vehicle Replacement Fund. And you can see here, we're expecting to transfer about $280,000 to cash reserves. And then Enterprise Funds, that's your water and sewer operating activity, your water sewer capital projects, your stormwater projects. That's expected to transfer $2.2 million to cash reserves. Last year, that transfer was budgeted at $1.8 million. And I would say, from a finance perspective, we are comfortable recommending a budget with revenues with that kind of excess over expenditures because we know infrastructure projects are expensive. We only have to look at our experience this fiscal year and that $4.3 million project for the waterline improvements along Windy Hill Road to recognize that sometimes those projects come up, sometimes unexpectedly, and sometimes they can be more expensive than we had anticipated. So it is definitely nice to be able to go to our reserves when needed and to keep those key capital projects on track and on schedule. So we have used some of our reserves this year, and hopefully, we expect to build those reserves back up to an extent in the following fiscal year. There's always a level of unpredictability when it comes to budgeting. That's kind of the name of the game, and this year is certainly no exception. Really, towards the end of our operating budget process, we realized, hey, we've got to make some adjustments here. And I will tell you upfront, as it relates to the COVID-19 health crisis and our budgeting for it, we are guessing. But we have made an effort to make those educated guesses. We've been in close contact with other jurisdictions in the metro Atlanta area, and we feel like we are presenting some proposals here that are on par with what other professionals in this industry are planning for and anticipating in their coming fiscal year as well. So to start out with, you can see that we are budgeting 20% reductions in some key revenues. I will say, these are 20% reductions, not necessarily off the revised budget for the current fiscal year, but off of what I would otherwise have budgeted for FY 2021. Those reductions are being taken in the Title Ad Valorem Tax. That's the tax on vehicle purchases in Cobb County. 20% reduction for our alcohol-related revenue line items, parks programs and facility rentals, hotel motel tax, auto rental tax, and general business license. These are important revenue streams, but they are not the most important revenue stream. That would be our real property tax. This budget does assume that mayor and council will keep the millage rate at 8.99 mils, where it has been since fiscal year 2008. That's not something that is done in conjunction with this budget, but it's a separate decision that mayor and council makes. So it's built on that assumption. We did learn from the Cobb County Tax Assessor that the assessor for the county as a whole is expecting a 5% increase in the net tax digest. From our experience, the last four fiscal years, Smyrna has historically been about two percentage points higher than that. So for that reason, we feel comfortable recommending a 7% increase in our tax digest, but we are accounting for the COVID-19 impacts by reducing our budgeted collection rate. Historically, that's 98.5% of the total billed amount, and we've reduced that to 96.5%. And again, this is on par with what we feel like some other jurisdictions will be doing as well. So while we are taking a cut for that collection rate, because the tax digest is up 7%, on the whole, this is a net positive result in terms of our budgeted revenue for the next fiscal year. And then finally, our 2016 SPOST, that's the 1% sales tax revenue. Historically, I will say, over the last two or three years, our monthly revenue collections have been about 19% higher than the initial revenue projection that was used at the beginning, at the outset of this 2016 SPOST. But instead of using those historical numbers, those actual numbers, to kind of accommodate for the COVID-19 impacts, we are reducing the budgeted revenues to that original estimate. So again, we feel like that 19% sort of decrease is pretty much on par with those 20% cuts we're taking in other places. So this is kind of the summary of those different changes. You can see there, we have budgeted revenue losses of $1.8 million in the general fund, $327,000 in the Hotel Motel Fund, and about $1.7 million in the 2016 SPOST Fund. I've already mentioned it. I'll repeat it here. We are planning to use cash reserves to help us balance the general fund and the Hotel Motel Fund. Getting into the general fund now, this slide gives you an overview of the budgeted revenues. And what it shows you pretty clearly is that the most significant piece is property taxes. Not just real property tax, but all of the property taxes that go into that. And it is a total of $31.4 million. That's about 58% of our budgeted general fund revenues, far and away the largest piece. The next biggest there is charges for services at $9.3 million. That's about 17% of the total. And then you see the smaller categories there. Other taxes, inter-fund transfers, licenses and permits, intergovernmental revenues from Cobb County, fines and forfeitures, and then miscellaneous revenues. General fund expenditures do balance revenues at approximately $53.9 million. And this slide shows you that public safety activities represent the biggest portion at $14.7 million. That's about 27% of our general fund budget. General government services, things like parks, community development, library administration. Those things make up $11.5 million or 21% of our budget. Public Works is at $10.8 million or 20%. And then, we sort of separately break out insurance and other employee benefits. You see it there at just over $10 million. And then smaller amounts for our debt obligations for the coming year, as well as our scheduled capital and vehicle replacement projects. We wanted to kind of pull out a few highlights from the general fund expenditures and talk about those here. These are personnel-related on this slide. We did have a couple of significant increases. We had a $495,000 increase to health insurance, and we had a $377,000 increase to retirement contributions. Those benefits, and hence these increases as well, are allocated kind of proportionally among the different major funds based on the number of employees in each. So the general fund does absorb most of this increase. 90% of the increase is absorbed by the general fund budget. So just looking at those two things, you can understand those are a couple of significant pieces that we kind of had to work around as we put our budget together for FY 21. We did make room for a $40,000 line item in Human Resources for a class and compensation study. That's just going to allow us to take a look at our positions, our grades, our budgeted salaries, and make sure that those are on par with the metro Atlanta market. That's something we try to do every three years or so. We also have $38,000 in the budget for police officer retention bonuses. And our contingency this year in the general fund is $454,000. That does include $310,000 for half-year merit raises. This is something that historically we've been able to do. We do budget for it, and then at a subsequent date later on in the fiscal year, the issue comes before mayor and council, and you guys decide if we're in a position to be able to award those merit raises based on the annual performance reviews to be effective in January. So we've set aside $310,000 for that, and that leaves us with $144,000 of unallocated general fund contingency. These are some more highlights in the general fund expenditures. You can see that we've budgeted $185,000 for traffic signal optimization, $175,000 for body worn and vehicle-mounted cameras. I will note that we already have that hardware. We already have the equipment. This is just sort of the annual maintenance contract that goes along with that. So the city continues its commitment to protecting our citizens and our staff as well. And we've got a $15,000 line item for miscellaneous public art projects. That's something that we budgeted for last year, and we are doing again this year. $18,000 for new exercise equipment at the Wolf Center. $10,000 for more frequent playground cleaning. Of course, we do maintain, we do clean our playground equipment already, but we just anticipate that in this new environment, that there will be sort of a new and higher standard for cleanliness in our public facilities, and we've built in a little bit of extra for supplies in that respect. And we've got $10,000 for LED lighting, a retrofit of our lighting at the library. I understand the incandescent lights there have been growing more dim, and it has been the subject of some complaints among the library patrons. So this will allow us to change those out and hopefully provide a more efficient solution as well. That was the general fund. Moving on now, the E911 Fund is one of our special revenue funds. Moving on now, the E911 fund is one of our special revenue funds. It is special. We are proud of it. It's, Smyrna's got a communications center that if you make an emergency call within Smyrna City limits, it gets routed to our own communications center. That improves our response times, it allows us to provide better customer service. And you can see the primary source of funding for it is the E911 fees, those that are collected from the telecommunications companies and then remitted to the city. Historically, this fund has not been entirely self-sustaining, so it needs an annual subsidy from the general fund. This year, that transfer in is expected to be about $293,000. That is a little bit less than the $330,000 that we budgeted in FY 20. And you can see there that budgeted expenditures do balance revenues at about $2 million. Another one of our main special revenue funds is the hotel motel fund. The key source of revenue here are hotel motel taxes. That's a tax on room night stayed in Smyrna hotels. For the past couple of years, this revenue stream has been around $1.5 million for FY 20. Of course, we do project some declines there due to COVID-19, and that will continue in FY 2021. We have budgeted, as I mentioned earlier, 20% decrease. We pegged it at $1.2 million. And we've also budgeted, as I said, a use of reserves at $150,000. Traditionally, this fund has been able to transfer a smaller amount of money each year to cash reserves. This is one of those years where we need to use some from reserves. On the expenditure side, you can see we've got a payment out to the Cobb Galleria. That's actually an agreement we have with the Cobb Marietta Coliseum and Exhibit Hall Authority for tourism promotions and related activities. We've got a fixed percentage, a transfer to the general fund at $453,000, and then the other amounts there are just related to staffing our community relations division and allowing the city to host, to put on, to organize our event calendar throughout the year. Obviously, as we go about implementing that event calendar, we will be mindful of social distancing guidelines, and we will also be monitoring our revenues as they come in and we get a better picture about how that's all going to shake out in the coming year. So I would just say that our event calendar is probably subject to change as we monitor Next is the water sewer fund. And you can see here, the big piece of revenue here is actually three revenue accounts. It's our water sewer base rate, as well as the usage charges for both water and sewer. That adds up to about $19.5 million this year. There is an annual increase from the Cobb County Marietta Water Authority. The council, by practice, has traditionally automatically passed through any increase that we receive from the water authority. We pass that on to our retail customers here in Smyrna. For the last three years, that increase has been 2%. We don't yet know what it will be for the coming year, but this budget does account for, it does include a similar increase beginning in January. On the expense side, you can see the wholesale purchase of water is the biggest line item. We've got a transfer to water sewer CIP of about $3.3 million. We've got a transfer to the general fund of $1.5 million. That's about the same amount it typically is every year. I will say that the idea there is that general fund departments and personnel and activities support our water sewer fund, and so this transfer is designed to sort of reimburse the general fund for those activities. As I mentioned earlier, this fund is expected to transfer about $2.2 million to cash reserves. My last slide before I hand it off to our finance director is proposed fee changes. I've listed those departments that have proposed fee changes for the coming year. The schedule of fees and charges is something that is adopted by Mayor and Council along with the adoption of the budget, so it is included in the budget and along with it, these proposed changes. I will point out the ones that are most significant here, because they impact the most people, include the ones I've already mentioned, the water sewer utilities with that increase in January, and then the stormwater utility with a budgeted increase that Ms. Robinson will talk about later on. For the rest of these, though, in the interest of time, I would just refer you to the budget book, page 25. And to take it away from here, our finance director.
Thanks, Jared. All right, debt. So right now, we have about $66.7 million of outstanding bond debt. We added to our bond debt in the current fiscal year when we issued bonds related to the TAD. We had a TAD note with Halpern Enterprises that had been on the books for quite a while and had a high interest rate on it. So we refinanced that this year and got a much lower interest rate with a local bank on that. So that's hopefully going to help us pay that off sooner and get that debt off of our books. So this fiscal year in 2021, we have a little over $12 million that's scheduled to be paid out. $541,000 of that is coming from the TAD fund. $3.9 million is coming from the general fund. We're going to use $100,000 of previously committed funds. Those funds were set aside by a previous council a number of years ago, and we have been using a portion of that each year to help offset the amount that's needed from the general fund to cover the debt service. $237,000 is coming from Title Ad Valorem. Back prior to the change in the T-Vat law, there was a portion of that that came directly to the SPOST fund, and so we were using that to pay the interest on the 2016 series bonds, which are the Windy Hill Bonds. And we are going to continue to pay that from SPOST this year because we have collected more money on that Title Ad Valorem than we've spent on the interest for those bonds. Just as a point of clarification, those are not, it's, those are not the SPOST dollars that go in. This is an extra thing that was going into that fund based on a previous council's decision to set aside funds into the SPOST account. That ended with the passing of the new Title Ad Valorem last year. And then the big thing that's coming out, makes up that $12 million, is $7.6 million. That is the first payment on our Windy Hill Bonds. We have this $7.6 million due in this fiscal year, and the next fiscal year, we have $7.7 million as due on those Windy Hill Bonds to pay those off. Just a little bit of good news. In fiscal year '22, we pay off another one of our bonds, our 2001 series bonds. So we paid off one of our bond series in the previous fiscal year, and we're going to pay off another one in 2022. So we are slowly starting to get rid of the old debt off of our books. All right, general fund CIP. You can see here that our general fund CIP this year is $1.4 million. That's an increase of about $129,000 over the fiscal year 2020 adopted amount. And that entire amount, the $1.4 million, is funded by a transfer from the general fund into the CIP fund to cover all of those costs. I'll go through each of the projects in the next slide. The first one, we're going to talk about general government first, the automation of inspection scheduling. This is for the community development department, and this is to get rid of the antiquated system that we currently have in place and to get it, and to replace it with a more automated system that will allow some efficiency increases for the community development department. Going along with that is an electronic plan review process that's going to allow us to receive plans digitally. So it will enable multiple departments that are involved in those review processes to review those, those plans simultaneously. Right now, when you have the paper plans, that gets a little convoluted and takes up time when they're going between community development and the fire marshal's office. So those two projects, community development staff has been working hard on, and I think everybody in the community who interacts with community development will appreciate those changes and get us kind of up to date with where we should be. The next project is the desktop computer upgrades, $46,000. That is an annual project that we have every year, and we have about 200 computers citywide that IT manages, and this is just replacing those on about a five-year replacement schedule. We've had that in CIP for quite some time. The next two projects, a youth services remodel of $60,000 and an adult services remodel at the library. Both of those are getting some much-needed updates to the library. Those are dealing with some ADA compliance, having ADA compliant shelving. When you bring those shelving, those shelving units down, you're also going to enable some of the natural light to come into the library. As Jared mentioned on a previous slide, that lighting in the library has been a, has been a topic of discussion, and so that's going to help with that area. And in the youth services, we're going to have some new books, we're going to have some more STEM-type activities for the children and just have a little bit more collaborative learning environment. So those are some changes that I know the library and the people who are frequenting the library are going to be excited about in the coming year. Parks and Recreation, Park Sinage System, $20,000. This is a project that we started in the current fiscal year, and we're going to continue into fiscal year '21 and '22. This is one of the projects, one of the ideas that came out of the Parks Master Plan that we completed in a previous year. Playground for two- to five-year-olds at Taliesin, $30,000. This is new playground equipment that's going to be for the, like, the pre-K age group, and it's going to complement the playground equipment that was recently installed at Taliesin for the older age groups. So that'll be helpful for the parents taking their children to Taliesin to play. Maintenance areas at Taliesin and Chuck Camp. The Parks Maintenance Staff utilizes these two locations for equipment storage and also for supplies and material storage. And this $50,000 is going to do some much-needed improvements and improve the safety and the functionality of both of those storage locations at our parks. The last one on here is the park, I'm sorry, is the pond bank stabilization. This $100,000 is going to go towards stabilizing the pond right out here. There is some erosion and some deterioration of that park bank. It's also going to help with preservation of the ecosystem in the pond, and it's just going to help kind of true up some of the safety needs of that pond because we've been seeing that bank erode over the last couple of years. Public Safety, Fire Training Conex Boxes. This is a much-anticipated project for our fire department. They've been waiting on this for a while. This project was changed in scope, and we, from a huge several-hundred-thousand-dollar facility to the $75,000, this is going to be Conex storage-type boxes that are going to be assembled and allow our firefighters to do the training that they need and have the practice that they need within city limits. Right now, they have to leave the city limits to go to a facility to engage in this training. So this is going to help them and also keep them within our city limits, so when we need them, they're available instead of in a partnering city or county. Also, for the fire department, is structural firefighting gear of $159,000. This is going to provide our fire staff, firefighter staff in the response division with a second set of turnout gear, and this is the gear that they wear when they go into fires or into some, some traffic situations as well. It's our protective gear, and this will enable them to have a second set so that if they do, if they do go into a fire or they're in a situation that they don't have to put on that gear that has some contaminants in it when they go on another call, this allows them a clean set of gear to put on until the other set of gear can be properly cleaned for them to wear. This is a request that's been on the books for a while for the fire department, and I know they're excited to get that. Water pipe replacement at the jail. In this current fiscal year, we have noticed that we've had some pipe breakages at the jail, and we've had some mold and some mildew and just some issues over there. And so it's been determined that there needs to be a replacement of all the water pipes because we're kind of patching one thing and then something else blows out. So it's just a total replacement of the pipes over there to get that back to where we need it to be. Also, we have police station improvements for $75,000. This is going to provide new flooring in the hallways of the police station, and it's also going to provide a new paint job for the hallways and all the offices over there because the carpet and the walls are looking a little worn over there. So that's to get that back up to where it needs to be. And the last item under public safety on this slide is the police laptop computer refresh, $42,500. This is also one of those projects that we've had year over year. We've been doing this similar to in the, the general government section. This just enables them to replace their computers they have on a rotating schedule. Public Works, miscellaneous carpet replacement, $20,000. This is a project that we've had year over year. We budget $20,000 every year. This allows Public Works and the departments to determine what facilities might need a little upgrade to their flooring in the, in the fiscal year, and this provides them $20,000 to do that. Next one down is HVAC replacement. This project was added, I believe it was the last fiscal year, and we are just putting aside money, $106,000 annually, to go towards replacement. Some years, we won't spend that, obviously, and some years, we'll need more of that, and so we'll have funds that will roll over from previous years to go towards HVAC replacement. Broner Hall improvements, $100,000. This is for some fascia repair, some siding repair, and just to kind of fix the outside of Broner for some wear and tear on that building. The detention pond maintenance of $100,000. This is a project that we added in fiscal year '20, and this is to go, this is to go towards cost for the maintenance and the upkeep of detention ponds that the city is responsible for. And it also will help, you know, with pollutants and other things going into the waterways. That is another one of those projects that is going to kind of roll year to year as we move forward. The replacement of underground sanitation cans of $30,750. These are the sanitation cans that we have in areas of the city where the rollout carts are not practical. And so we have been in a process of replacing those cans and fixing them over the last couple of fiscal years, and we're going to continue that for a few more fiscal years to get all those replaced. Some of the current ones are, they're broken, the locks are broken, and they're not, you know, coming out of the ground as easily as they should, and so that presents a hazard for our Public Works employees who are trying to service those cans. The next one down is sanitation carts. This item, in, in previous budgets, I think we started this, this, in our current fiscal year, it might have been fiscal year 19, we had always budgeted for replacement sanitation carts in our operating budget and then for new ones in the CIP fund. And we just decided for the, for ease of finance staff and also for Public Works staff, it would be to everybody's advantage just to have the whole amount in CIP. So this line item is going to cover both the replacement of sanitation carts and also for new customers' carts that are needed as we have development and new people moving into the city. So you can see, all of that summarizes to about $1.4 million worth of CIP, and there's, that's 20 projects that we plan to do in the current year. I will say on this, similar to some of the things that Jared touched on, is we are going to monitor our revenues that come in, and we are, you know, we're not going to move forward with these projects until we've collected revenue. As a matter, like, even before COVID, we had a practice that we were not, we did not allow departments to begin spending their capital funds until November because that's when we collect our property taxes. And as Jared mentioned on a few slides ago, that property taxes are our single largest revenue, and so we don't want to start spending money before we've collected it. And so we will be very mindful as we go forward and we work with the departments to not start these capital projects until we're sure that we have the funds in place to do so. 911 CIP, there is nothing in the current year CIP, which is a good thing. In fiscal '22, we're going to upgrade the phone system. The phone system is becoming outdated, and we need to stay compliant and make sure that that's, you know, doing the best we can when people are calling into our center, and so there's a scheduled upgrade for that in '22. And then in '23, there is a furniture replacement for the furniture in that facility. Water CIP, we have infrastructure on here, $2.3 million. That is a project that we have that's kind of open-ended, we budget for on an annual basis, and they can use that for whatever infrastructure improvements they deem necessary throughout the city. The next project down, $660,000 for meter, meters and dials. We started this project a few fiscal years ago. When we had, when we put our new meters in the ground about 15 years ago, we put all $15,000 in the ground at the we put all fifteen thousand in the ground at the same time. And obviously, that was a large financial undertaking and we, we pursued some financing for that. We decided a couple of years ago that we were going to replace the, some aging meters and dials through several fiscal years and not have to go into any long-term financing to, to, to handle that task. And so you see that we're spending six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the next two fiscal years and then a hundred and eighteen in fiscal twenty-three to get those up to date. Drainage, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. This is another kind of open-ended project for public works and the water folks to decide what they deem necessary throughout the city drainage-wise to spend funds on. The fire line meters of a hundred thousand dollars, that was a project we had in the current fiscal year. And that is just installing meters and, and, and actually, we're doing inventory now. The public works guys are to determine which buildings have fire lines and, and which don't. And we're going to have to start inclu- and start installing those on these older buildings because that is a requirement for EPD. And then other sixty thousand dollars, in the current fiscal year, that is a, a pull behind jetter truck. And it's going to allow them to clean the mains and, before they can inspect them with the videos. All in total, water CIP this year is a little over three point three million dollars. Stormwater CIP, you can see this year, it's one million four hundred thousand dollars, a little over that. This is funded a hundred percent by the monthly stormwater fee. We budget a hundred percent of the revenue projected for that fund as expenses for that fund. This budget includes a seven percent increase effective in January. That will go into effect at the same time that the water rate increase goes into effect, and that's in January. It's going to, that monthly fee for the stormwater is going to go from three forty-five to three dollars and fifty-two cents. The last increase we did was fifty cents each. We did one of those in January of eighteen and in January of twenty-twenty. Over the next five years, we have budgeted a two percent increase to meet our capital needs over the next five years. SPOST. Okay, so as Jared indicated earlier, we have a big couple of years ahead of us on the SPOST due to the Wendy Hill project, which was sort of the, the flagship project for the city for the twenty sixteen SPOST. We're going to stop collecting our sales tax in December of twenty-twenty-one. And then hopefully, when the new SPOST is passed and effective, it'll be effective in January of twenty-twenty-two to go, to start collecting money for our next SPOST. So as Jared mentioned, we're going to spend more this year in fiscal year twenty than we are collecting. But we do have a healthy cash balance in our SPOST account to pay for those expenses this year. And hopefully, we continue to collect those SPOST funds at, at a, at a good rate to get us through in, in subsequent years. So just, I think it was mentioned on our Cal meeting conversation on Thursday that due to the increased cost of Wendy Hill and due to the contract that was signed on that, to complete that project and to the declining revenues, we might have to look at some different options going forward for the financing of that, completion, the completion of that project. Just to, just to kind of be fully transparent here, you see on the slide that Wendy Hill is six point five million dollars. And you have other projects in here of five point seven. I'm sorry, I'm looking at twenty. On twenty-twenty-one, you have twelve point five million dollars of Wendy Hill. And you have about ten million, it says other projects. Including that nine million six eighty-nine is actually seven point seven million dollars worth of the, the first bond payment for Wendy Hill. And so that means the majority of our twenty-one expenses related to SPOST are going to be for the Wendy Hill project. And that also is true in fiscal year twenty-two. The, the contract for construction on Wendy Hill is seven point three million. But including that ten point five million is our second bond payment on Wendy Hill, which is a little, which is seven point seven million dollars. Another capital fund that, actually, I'm sorry, it's our internal service fund. Another capital expenditure is our vehicle replacement fund. You can see in the twenty-twenty-one budget, we are looking to replace eighteen vehicles to the tune of one point three million dollars approximately. You can see community development, environmental services and fire all have one. Highways and streets, parks and maintenance has two. Police has got five new cars. Recycling has got three. Sanitations has got two new trucks. And then water distribution has got one. There are some new, there are two new fleet additions. One of those is in community development and one of them is in environmental services. The community development is, we're getting, we're getting a new vehicle for them. They had a hand-me-down that had been part of their fleet and had, and they weren't, and that car wasn't in the schedule to be replaced. So we added that to the schedule. And then we also have added a, a new vehicle to environmental services. It'll be the, it'll be the purchase of a, a used truck as a box truck for environmental services. The rest are replacements of existing vehicles. And then I think Jared touched on it earlier too. We have a hundred thousand dollars that we're going to put towards emergency, in there for emergencies. So if we have wrecked vehicles or anything, haven't started vehicles, we've got a hundred thousand dollars that we can allocate to replace those vehicles in fiscal twenty-twenty-one. So eighteen new vehicles to the cost of about one point three million dollars. New personnel requests. We, we started this process with personnel requests prior to this health crisis that we're in. And so our departments submitted requests for a lot of positions that they felt necessary. And we did not disagree with them that these new positions were needed and necessary. But we also had to be mindful that we were in a, a different environment and we had to be very aware of the cost that we approved as we go forward because personnel is, you know, one of the single largest expenses for the city. And when you add personnel, you're adding the benefits, benefits and everything else associated with them. And that, that's a, that's a big cost that, you know, you have for years to come. And so we wanted to be very mindful of that and wanted to be conservative with that and not request a lot of positions in this budget. The one position that kind of made it through all of that is a part-time museum assistant. We have a museum that currently has one individual in that building. And it's a, she needs someone else in the building with her. It's a safety concern and also, you know, just kind of, she needs some, she needs to, to be able to do things related to the collection. And she cannot do that if she's upstairs, in case people are walking in and out of the building daily. And so this is a part-time assistant that would come in and, and be there when the facility is open to the public. It's been budgeted at three quarters of a fiscal year. And so this was a, is a position that would start in October if approved through the budget. Just, we had nineteen requests for full-time employees that were submitted. And that was a one point one million dollar fiscal impact. And so like I said, we just didn't feel like that was responsible to bring to y'all for adoption in our current environment. We have several reclassifications that were requested and have made it through for the recommendation to council. These are our current employees that we feel are doing jobs and tasks that maybe are a little bit outside of how the position was originally graded. The first one is the special products, special projects coordinator, to be upgraded from a twenty to a twenty-four and to be reclassed to a special projects manager and regional liaison. This position has got a lot more responsibility that has been added to the job description. And so because of that, it has been upgraded to reflect that additional responsibility. It's about fourteen thousand dollars budget impact on that position. The buildings and plant maintenance technician, going from the maintenance tech grade six to a grade eight, which would be a maintenance tech senior. That just has to do with the increased responsibility and some increased technical know-how that needs to be rewarded for this employee who's kind of moving up and, and increasing his knowledge. The community relations, the community relations assistant from a thirteen to a community relations coordinator at a fifteen. This just has to do with the responsibility of the job. It's going to go to a, an exempt position. It's currently a non-exempt position. It's going to go to an exempt position with this change. And then this has a, a five percent increase in that, 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 uh, job description. The environmental services is similar, is similar to that. For the KSB coordinator is going to go from a thirteen to a fifteen. Similar to the community relations, it's just a realignment of the responsibility of that job, that position. She has a, a lot of work with volunteers where she supervises them. And she also has some managerial, managerial responsibilities related to Key Smerna, Inc., the nonprofit. And so this position is also going to move to an exempt position and be upgraded to a fifteen. There's a five percent increase for that one as well. The next one, fire prevention office assistant going to, from a six to an eleven administrative assistant. This is just an alignment of that, of what she's actually doing with others in her, in that same grade. And it's just moving her up to where she should be compared to other people in the city who are doing the same task that she is. That's a five percent increase for that one as well. The fire prevention, the lieutenant there, when that, it's an engineer right now, but the person in that, in that job is doing the work that all the other, the same as all the other fire lieutenants in that division. And so they're doing the same work, they shall become, say, the same way. And so this is just a reclass of that position from a grade eighteen to a grade twenty-one so that everyone in that division has the title of fire lieutenant. There's also a five percent increase for that position. Library clerk, the library clerk position that's going from a senior to a circulation manager. This just has to do with her responsibilities and the managerial level duties that she's doing, including supervision of staff and the circulation desk. The next one down is the technical services librarian going from a fifteen to an eighteen. And that is just, it, there's, there's not a current year impact for that one in the budget. It's just kind of opening up that grade so that she has potential to move up as she stays with the city. She's doing the job of probably two people in other libraries throughout the region. And so this has just given her a little bit of room to grow in her position and, and, you know, for her to still be here with the city and, and, you know, earning what they feel is, is needed for that position. The next one down, the supervisor for fleet maintenance going from a twenty-one to a twenty-two. And be, going from a supervisor to a manager. And, and this year, Jared did a fantastic job of getting finalized a fleet SOP that has to deal with the purchase of vehicles and retirement of vehicles and just kind of, all, all the policies that we had that were, you know, just sort of the known policies that we had followed. He tackled getting those all written down and did a lot of collaboration with, with all the various departments to get that in place. And that was put into place, put into place earlier this year. Part of that was an increased responsibility for the fleet manager right now, this, I mean, sorry, the fleet supervisor. And so with that increased responsibility, it was recommended that he go from a supervisor to a manager and get, and get upgraded from a twenty-one to a twenty-two. Parks admin, event and sales assistant at a grade eight, going to a facilities events coordinator, community center of fifteen. The position at the community center is doing the same as another position at another location. And so this just puts those two grades as the same. Obviously, there's still going to be a pay difference between those two positions because of years of experience. But this upgrades him to a grade fifteen, or upgrades that position to a grade fifteen and aligns it, same, same duties, same responsibilities should be the same across the various divisions of parks. The next one down, the senior programs coordinator going from a fifteen to the recreation services superintendent to grade twenty-one. That again, has to do with increased responsibilities and tasks that that position is handling. And, and it's also, this is also something that's coming out of the parks master plan that was adopted in a previous year. Police admin, they've got a, a senior crime analyst position at a fifteen that's currently vacant. They want to reclass it to a police sergeant at a grade twenty. And that is, that, that reclass is going to bring some of the additional fleet management oversight to the police department since they are the city's largest fleet user. And that position is going to handle, have a little bit more responsibility and kind of true up some of that over at the police station. Last one on here is the truck driver for sanitation, going from a grade eight to a truck driver senior at a grade nine. And this just allows for a little bit of a progression for one of the drivers in sanitation. Has a little bit more responsibility, has some oversight. And it also hopefully will create a little bit of a succession plan in that division. So you can see the full budget impact. These are, these are available, these are effective July first. And so the budget impact for these is about fifty-six thousand dollars. Some other personnel recommendations, as Jared touched on, the merit increase, which is the last one on this slide, the three hundred and ten thousand dollars. That is something that we bring to council in December every year, and those are effective January one. Those are based on employee merit, our, our evaluation process. And so historically, those have been one point five to three point five percent. And like I said, they're based on the employees' performance evaluations that are done by their supervisors. Three hundred and ten thousand, that has to be voted on y'all, like I said, in December. Also included in this is fire and police. We had talked about doing a three percent increase for sworn public safety personnel. That has been included in the budget with an effective date of January one. Just like the merit increases, these are subject to us bringing it in front of council and council taking a vote to approve those, it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And then we also have the fire department, they're paramedics. The paramedic is a, is a, a higher certification. And they currently get five percent on top of their base pay for that. From other jurisdictions, the competition is, some of, they're getting seven and a half, ten percent in other jurisdictions. And so we want to raise it two and a half percent. Forty-one thousand dollars would be the, the, the cost for half a year. And that will get them to a seven and a half percent bonus for holding that certification. That's a, a program they have to go through that takes them about eighteen months to complete. And so it is a strenuous, uh, process and something that, you know, fire, and we believe they should be rewarded for. And they are rewarded for that in other jurisdictions. And so that's also a competitive measure to maintain the paramedics that we have at the fire department and to incentivize them to receive that specialized training. Again, five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars is the total of all of these. They will come before you again for approval in December when we have a better feel for kind of how we're, where we're going to be revenues, revenue-wise. That'll be halfway through our fiscal year approximately. So we have given you a ton of information tonight. And if you have any questions and you want to see the detailed budget book, you can go to our website. When you go, once you go to our website, there's a finance and budget tab on the top right. Once you click on that, oops, I'm sorry. Once you click on that, it's going to bring you to the finance and it lets you get to the, the budget data. So there's a PDF on there. You also have, at that same link, you have access to all of our previous budgets. So if you have some time on your hands and want to look through those, they're about four hundred and fifty pages each year. So if you want, want some reading, you can go there and get that. But you can, you can see all this, all the information that was provided to council is going to be on this link. Once we open the facilities back up, we will have a copy of that book in city hall. We will also have a copy of that book in the library for citizens who are not able to go to the, to the website to get that information. It will be in hard copy, available to them at city hall and at the library. Okay. So tonight, we're presenting the budget to you for our required public hearing. We are going to meet with council on May twenty-eighth and discuss any changes that y'all might have, make any of those changes at the Cal. And then we're hoping that on June first, we'll be ready to adopt the budget as presented to y'all. So I'll, just want to take this opportunity publicly to thank Jared for all that he has done, getting this budget together. I know for those who've been on council for a while, you've been through this process with us a couple of times. For those new on council, you know, this is a, a huge process. You've seen the four hundred plus pages of the budget book, so it's not a small task at all. And I just wanted to publicly thank Jared for all of his hard work and all that he's done to help get this together. So if you have any questions, we'll be, we're available to answer anything you might have.
I just want to say thank you to both of you. There's no script for this.
There's no script for this stuff that we're dealing with right now, and this, this year, unlike any other, probably in decades, is, is the hardest to, um, the hardest to project and the hardest to deal with, and, and y'all have done a great job, um, and particularly putting the bigger-ticket items and capital projects and expenditures to January in anticipation of whatever might come our way and being able to react. Just thank y'all for your, for your work on that. This is a public hearing. Um, if anybody in the public would like to speak or, or ask questions, to come up now and be sworn in? Anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to say? Any questions or comments from the council?
Just, thanks a lot. I mean, you guys do a ton of work on this, and it, uh, it's a dry presentation, not because you, it's a lot of data to get across, right? And you guys did a nice job doing it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much for, for everything you guys are doing. Thanks.
I think Kristen just found out that if she could, if she was talking, she didn't have to wear a mask, so she just kept going, you know?
I did. This, it is so hot with this thing on, you feel like you can't breathe.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Yeah, real quick. Just, yeah, first, thanks to the finance staff. I know this is an almost impossible task, given what we're dealing with right now, but I think, um, we're in a very good spot. The, the only thing, um, I wanted to ask, and I think more for the people who may not know, but the, um, and we talked about that we're taking some of the funds from our reserves. Um, just wanted to see if you could comment on the, the health of our reserves right now and what this impact, what it would be in the total amount of what we're, what we're talking about.
Yes, and so, um, we have a very healthy fund balance. We have, um, about eighteen million dollars of, um, available fund balance that's not committed or assigned through another purpose. That's very healthy. Um, that gives us, um, several months, um, I had this on the top of my head, but it's gone. I think it's, um, I think that gets us like maybe four months' worth of operations. The GFOA, which is the government, the Government of Finance Officer Association, um, they recommend that you have two months of, um, your operating in your fund balance, and we have doubled that. Actually, I think as part of the, the presentation of the orders last year, they said that we had five months' worth of, um, reserves, um, in our, in our, um, fund balance. And so, um, although we are planning to use a half a million dollars about this year, um, we still do have quite a healthy fund balance, um, that we can rely on, um, to get us through. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, we'll close this public hearing. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to the next agenda item. Chief, you want to come up and wipe down the podium for any speakers that may come up next? Item six B under Formal Business is twenty-twenty dash one seven six. That's approval of the twenty-twenty-two SPOLOST Project List. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
Renewal of the Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, SPOLOST, for twenty-twenty-two is expected to go before the voters in November twenty-twenty. The SPOLOST will be for six years. The twenty-twenty-two SPOLOST Projects List outlines the list of projects the city is seeking the voters to approve. A public input session was scheduled in March of twenty-twenty. However, due to COVID-nineteen, the proposed list has not been previously, uh, presented to the public until today. Uh, the list is broken down into the following categories: citywide, parks, transportation, public safety, and joint city-county projects. Uh, staff does recommend approval of the list as presented.
Thank you, Tammy. Any questions or comments from the council? All right, may I have a motion? Oh, Susan has a question. Sorry, Ms. Wilkinson.
I do, um, just want to, uh, speak about, um, the SPOLOST list and the concerns that I have of combining the, um, the item on the first, uh, item there, the Downtown and South Cobb Drive improvements. Um, the, I just feel like that the South Cobb Drive area is not, uh, it doesn't intersect with the Downtown, and I have concerns about grouping the two of those together. The South Cobb Drive is an area that, um, is, has been underserved for a long time, and I feel like, um, that the Downtown is an area that's over, um, served, and I just have concerns about grouping those two together. I feel like it's risky in the, uh, in the long run. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson. As we discussed at our public meeting, our committee meeting on Thursday, uh, those two are grouped together to allow us more flexibility with how we fund them, and I've, I've committed, uh, to fully funding, uh, South Cobb Drive and the improvements there. I agree with you that that's a, uh, an area that's not been paid enough attention to over the years and, and needs a, needs an overhaul. Um, I'll, I'll note that there are some projects in there that are specific to Downtown in addition, meaning the twelve million dollars possibly, the Aquatic Center that could be Downtown, uh, the four million for the parking deck. So if you put all that money together, you're talking, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty million dollars for, for the two. Um, so, uh, it, it's my commitment to fully fund both and have some flexibility with, uh, with Downtown projects as well. Any other questions or comments on the SPOLOST? All right, may I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Lindley, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Those opposed? All right, it's approved six-one with Ms. Wilkinson voting in the negative. Item six C, twenty-twenty dash one seven seven, approval of the twenty-twenty-two SPOLOST, uh, Special Local Option Sales Tax, SPOLOST, intergovernmental agreement with Cobb County and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
The Cobb County Board of Commissioners are expected to vote to authorize the referendum in the coming weeks. Approval of the twenty-twenty-two SPOLOST is expected to go before the voters in November twenty-twenty. Prior to voting to authorize a referendum, it is required that all IGAs with participating local governments are in place. The agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney. Staff recommends approval of the IGA, subject to additional minor changes that may need to be made by city administration and/or the city attorney's office.
Thank you, Ms. Sadler Jones. Any questions or comments from the council? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Welch, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gould, seconds. All those in favor, please vote. Opposed? It's approved six-one with Ms. Wilkinson voting in the negative. Item six D, uh, this next series of items is approvals to different, uh, to the Hospital Authority and to the Housing Authority. This is the first, twenty-twenty dash one six eight, approval of reappointment of Ward Three resident Joan Stewart to the Hus- Smyrna Hospital Authority. This is a four-year term that expires, uh, May thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Lindley. You can't continue talking just because you can take your mask off.
I was gonna say, I wish I had her bio, I would read it aloud. Uh, Ms. Stewart has served, uh, is the appointee for Ward Three for a number of years. She lives, uh, here behind us on Bank Street. Uh, spoke with her, she's willing to continue to serve and recommendary, reappoint her. Motion do pass.
Do I have a second? Ms. Wilkinson, seconds. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Item six E, twenty-twenty dash one seven four, approval of reappointment of Ward Four resident Linda Smith to the Smyrna Hospital Authority. This is a four-year term that expires May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Welch.
I just happen to have her bio and a long book to read here, so. Uh, no, Linda has served, uh, at, at least throughout my term of eight years and I think several terms before that on the Hospital Authority. I'd just like to make a motion to approve, to reappoint her to the Ward Four Hospital Authority.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lindley, seconds. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Six F, twenty-twenty dash one six nine, approval of the reappointment of Ward Five resident Bonnie Berry to the Smyrna Hospital Authority, four-year term that expires May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Ms. Wilkinson.
Um, yes, I'd like to say that I've, um, that, uh, Ms. Berry has been serving on the Hospital Authority, uh, for the Ward Five position for the time I've been in office for eight years, and she's agreed to continue serving on that board, and I really appreciate, um, her, her service. And at this time, I'd like to move to approve item six F, twenty-twenty-one six nine, um, the reappointment of Ward Five resident Bonnie Berry to the Smyrna Hospital Authority.
Do I have a second? Mr. Wagner, seconds. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Item G, twenty-twenty dash one seven zero, approval appointment of Ward Six resident Laura Cersei to the Smyrna Hospital Authority. This is a four-year term that expires May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ms. Cersei is a experienced, uh, medical professional, uh, Forest Hills resident, longtime Smyrna resident, and, uh, very knowledgeable, very capable, and it's a pleasure to, uh, appoint her, uh, to serve on the, uh, on the Smyrna Hospital Authority. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item G, two thousand twenty dash one seventy, as read.
Do I have a second? Mr. Wheaton, all those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Item H, twenty-twenty dash one seven five, approval of reappointment of Ward Four resident Miller Davis to the Smyrna Housing Authority. This is a five-year term that expires May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, um, Mr. Davis has served on this, um, Smyrna Housing Authority for a number of years, um, has done a very good job, uh, and, uh, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item six H, two oh two oh dash one seven five.
Motion by Mr. Welch, do I have a second? Mr. Lindley, seconds. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Item I, twenty-twenty dash one seven one, approval of appointment of Ward Six resident Casey George to the Smyrna Housing Authority. This is a five-year term that expires May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Gould.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Casey George is a, a very knowledgeable, experienced fellow who's agreed to serve on the Housing Authority. He's got a, a nice background in, in finance and other areas related to, uh, to community housing. He'll be a great asset to, uh, to, to the board and I think to the city of Smyrna. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item six I, two thousand twenty dash one seventy-one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Welch, seconds. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Item J, twenty-twenty dash one seven two, approval of the appointment of Ward Seven resident Tim Christie to the Smyrna Housing Authority. This is a five-year term that expires May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Wheaton.
Yeah, Mr. Christie has been a really great resident for the city of Smyrna, uh, lived over in Vining's Estates, um, tremendous background in finance, uh, really, really, uh, passionate about, uh, ways to, uh, improve housing as well, so this is a really good mix in addition to this authority. Uh, so with that, I move to approve, uh, twenty, uh, one seventy-two, as read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gould, seconds. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Next item is item seven, commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is the consent agenda. Short tonight, Ms. Sadler Jones, can you please read it for council approval?
I love it. Item eight A, consent agenda is as follows: approval of the May fourth, twenty-twenty, mayor and council meeting minutes.
Anybody got any problems with the, with the meeting minutes from that day? Do I have a motion to approve?
Form a.
All right, do I have a second? Mr. Pickens, seconds. All those in favor of the approving the cons- a consent agenda, please vote. All right, it's approved seven-zero. Next item is nine, which is Ward and Committee Reports, and before I do that, I forgot in my opening remarks to, uh, give a shout-out to the Smyrna Police Department and also the, the Fire Department. The, the grocery delivery program that they put in place with Sergeant Defense, uh, got national news coverage this last week with, uh, ABC News covering it, and, um, just thank you, Chief, for being an example in your department for not only the, other departments around the state, but, but also around the country now. Mr. Pickens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Glad to finally have this mask off. Um, just want to say that as we, uh, finally are able to meet and things are starting to open back up, I just hope that everyone still stays safe and just continue what we're doing, and hopefully we'll make it through this quickly rather than later. Thanks.
Mr. Wagner. Take your time, Mr. Wagner, it's okay.
Yeah, I think I'll reiterate what, um, Glenn said as well, just about, even though we are able to start trying to meet in person, um, I know there's some that have concerns, including myself, about making sure that we, um, continue to social distance and do this in a smart way as, um, we see that even sometimes, you know, we still have asymptomatic transmission, so everyone just needs to be very careful and continue to social distancing when we are in person. Um, only other thing is I know that there had been some people that had raised concerns about, um, ballot boxes and the lack thereof, um, in Smyrna, as well as early vote locations, and that I think we all have, as we talked about in the Cal meeting, um, are trying to work with our city staff, um, and Cobb elections to put together a list of places where, um, we could have some easier access for absentee ballots, um, when we get to the November election, um, if we are still in this kind of a situation, as well as hopefully trying to increase the number of early vote locations that we can have here in Smyrna, just make it easier for everyone here in the city limits to vote instead of having to drive to the other parts of the county as usual to, um, to vote early. So, with that, again.
Mr. Lindley.
Thank you. I think that counts as filibuster, but anyway. Um, it is, uh, it's good to see everybody this evening in person, uh, even though it looks like we are hiding, uh, behind masks, and never again will I ever put a muzzle on my dog at the vet. Wanted to, uh, thank the, uh, the city staff, uh, for the job well done they've been doing, and in particular, Chief Bennett and, uh, City Administrator Sadler Jones. Uh, they've been, uh, instrumental in sort of continuing to, on top of everything else they do in the, in a given day, uh, working through some of the traffic calming issues in Ward Three, uh, so we'll hopefully have some progress, uh, to report and execute, uh, in the, uh, in the coming weeks. But, uh, as, uh, as my two colleagues have stated, and I suspect the rest, we'll, uh, encourage everybody to continue to follow CDC guidelines and be safe. We're far from being out of the woods. Thank you.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I, I just want everybody to understand, as, as Finance Chairman, we are, we're traveling uncharted ground, and we're going to do the best we can to put a budget together that, um, that we can meet, but at the same time, we are, uh, as a council, I think I, I want everybody here to understand, we need to be very careful of, of how and when we spend this money, um, as has been told to us, and our revenues come in in November. And, um, until that time, we, we need to be very, very aware of every nickel and dime that goes out of the city's coffers. Uh, I want the citizens to understand that, um, that the Finance Department, uh, Kristen and Jared have put a lot of time and effort into this, and that I, I think they've done a good job, but, uh, we as a council, uh, it's sort of the buck stops here, and, um, we're going to do the best we can to make sure that, uh, that the monies are spent wisely and that, uh, we're, we're watching out for every penny. With that, a yell.
Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to thank Kevin Moore and Tammy also, and the other staff members that are, uh, working on the, uh, traffic calming, um, safety issues that I've talked to them about in Ward Five, and, um, thank them for doing that. Um, also, I want to remind everyone that, um, Monday is Memorial Day, and we usually have the memorial service in the downtown for those that have lost their life serving our country, and, um, that has been canceled due to the COVID, but I just want to remind everybody to remember those, uh, people in your prayers on, uh, Monday. Thank you. Without a yell.
Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple, a couple things. First, just want to thank the, uh, Casey George and Laura Cersei for volunteering to be on our, on our various boards. We really appreciate their time. Um, to, to echo the comments by, uh, Councilman Welch, uh, you know, a lot of work has gone into this budget, and there is, as, uh, there is a great uncertainty about our, um, what lies ahead of us, um, and I think the staff's done a good job, along with the Finance Committee, of trying to, um, uh, hedge our bets, so to speak, or mitigate the uncertainty, uh, by pushing off capital projects and delaying some expenditures until we have some sense of where our revenue is. So one of the challenges is going to be, I think, is that we'll have some requests from residents that we may not be able to fulfill in this coming year, and that's not something that I enjoy, right? Because you always want to be able to say yes, but we're going to be in some spots, so, uh, we just ask the residents, they'll have to bear with all of us, right? Staff's taking some, uh, doing the best they can in saving, uh, uh, cutting back on expenditures where, where possible, and, uh, it'll be, it'll be all of us in this together this year to make sure we get through it, get through it so fine on the finance side. Uh, and, and then lastly, just really with, uh, I appreciate the chance for us to meet together here today, um, but it- but it really emphasizes and want to encourage folks to adhere by the emergency order, which, which will be in place into June, and, you know, be vigilant, wear your masks, set a good example for your family and for your friends. We'll get through this together, but it will take effort and involvement by everybody. Thank you. That, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Mr. Wheaton.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, you know, emphasize what others have already emphasized as well, we're certainly not out of the woods yet when it comes to COVID-19. You know, some localities are seeing rises in cases, some are seeing falls in cases. What that underscores is that we still have work to do, so let's be sure to practice beyond even the recommendations to what, to what we can, to make sure that we can stop the spread and really start to see a huge decline, not only locally but nationwide. I want to also just, you know, kind of echo Mayor's comments earlier. Big congratulations to all those folks graduating and moving on, even the kids that are going up to different schools. Took our son, who finished fifth grade officially the other day, and now he's excited to go to Campbell Middle, and so he's in that transition as well. So congratulations to all the, the youth out there, whatever level you're at, and whatever advancements you have, you're, you're to be applauded for that. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Sadler-Jones.
Ms. Wilkinson mentioned that Monday is Memorial Day, that is a city holiday, so city administrative offices will be closed. We will reopen on Tuesday, May 26th, although our facilities are still closed to the public. You can still reach our staff by phone, email, and other means of communication. So thank you very much.
Ms. Scott Cochran. Ms. Heather?
Just a brief update from the clerk's office. The past two weeks, we have purged just under 1,000 boxes from our record center with the use of some police department staff. So we are working towards being more electronic in our documentation and retention, and that is something that we will continue to work on in the future.
Item 10 is show cause hearings. We have none. Item 11 is citizen input. We normally have a sign-up sheet that we put out there, but we didn't want everybody sharing the pen, so I'd invite anybody, any member of the audience who has public comment tonight to go ahead and come forward and just state your name and address if you have any comments. Don't all rush up here at once. All right, we'll close the citizen input. With that, with no other business brought before this body, I'll declare this meeting adjourned at 8:29. We've done a great job so far. Please social distance on your way out. Thank you so much.